That was horrible. There we go. Golly, started off right, right? All right, welcome everybody. We'd like to call our meeting to order here, March 27, 2023. Welcome, everybody. We'd like to declare a quorum of seven members present. Bring us to item C1, receive presentations from superintendent search firms. And we will jump right into this and introduce the into learning group. And you guys have the floor. Thank y'all for being here.
Terms of this particular job as superintendent search. So we are very excited to be here. We love College Station and College Station ISD and looking forward to presenting a little information to you. At the end, you'll have a chance to ask us some questions if you would like to, and certainly we would be open to that. But the first thing I just want you to be aware of is that into learning has been around for, since about 2011. When I retired from being College Station ISD superintendent, I joined in as a partner. And we do a lot of things around the state. We do, we have institutes for principals, for assistant principals, and for central office staff, as well as we do projects in school districts from strategic planning to bond planning to all things in between. In fact, I will be leaving here tonight and going to Eames ISD and facilitating a parent task force in Eames ISD this evening. And so we do work across the state in a lot, in a variety of ways. One of the things that we have been doing over the course of the past several years are executive searches. And here is a partial list of searches we have done in the not-too-distant past. Currently, we're working on searches in Duncanville and Grapevine for CFOs. We recently completed the Midway ISD superintendent search, the new superintendent there, Dr. Allen, started, I believe, like February 1st or something along those lines in Midway ISD. And you can see some of the other searches. San Angelo was a CFO as well. And so we, while we haven't done a tremendous number of superintendent searches, we have done a lot of searches over the course of the past few years. And these in particular, either Brad did them, I did them, or we did them together. So we have been working together on this aspect of our company for a while. Both Brad and I very much enjoy the search part of what we do because of the connections that we have and the people that we know, we find that it's rewarding for us, but also something that really indeed helps school districts. And we love that aspect of doing the searches. As we think about superintendent search, we wanted to lay out a process for you. Obviously, if we're the group selected, we would work very closely with you to determine what the specifics of the process were, but we wanted to give you an idea of what we do and how we go about things. And so there are, if we were selected, obviously, we would work very closely with you in determining a timeline and the interview process that you would like to go through. There's no one way to do it in terms of the interview process. We have some ideas, obviously, and you have some ideas, so we would want to sit down and discuss those with you. We want to listen to you. What are the district strengths? What are the opportunities as you think about the next years ahead of College Station ISD? And so we want to be responsive to that. And we want to know, how is it that you would like to get input from the community and the staff? There are, again, there are a number of ways that we could determine to do that, but we would want to hear from you related to how that might look and what you would be comfortable with. And then we want to obviously keep the community and the district and the school district updated in terms of the superintendent search process. It's obviously a very public process and one that we would, we would take seriously in the sense of not only doing it, but making sure that you felt informed and making sure that the community had a way to be informed as well. And so in leading into that, just thinking about the, the community, a couple of things just to be thinking about as you think about doing a superintendent search is that we could do some public forums that invite feedback from the, from the community. We're able to do online surveys. We can have a superintendent search website that you guys would host just to make it easy for the community and the candidates as well. We've done this a couple of different ways in the past in terms of getting input and building a profile. And so certainly be ready to listen to you and then act upon that. We would build a profile based on the feedback we received from you and the community. The profile then helps us drive the, the conversations that we have with potential candidates and certainly helps us vet the candidates before we bring them to you for your consideration. And then we would work with the district's communication department to develop any marketing plan that we needed to, to describe the district and the superintendent search. So just at the beginning, we want to listen to you. We want to be here for you because Brad and I are here, literally live in College Station, that would be a very easy thing for us to do in terms of face-to-face contact with the board as the board deemed necessary. And then how do we go about getting candidates? Fortunately for Brad and I, we, we know a lot of people in the state. And so while I have been retired since 2014 from the school district, I have stayed connected to people through the work of into learning, through our institutes, through the projects that we do. So we're, we have a lot of personal contacts and certainly would use those to reach out to people via phone call, text, email, and one-on-one interactions to generate interest in the position and to share with people about the position and why we think it is a good one. There are some, some national organizations and perhaps even some local organizations where we could certainly post information about the position and we would be ready to do that. And then we, we would just begin to consult with educators across the state in order to generate a list of potential candidates. And as that list is generated, then Brad and I take the initiative to reach out to those people. It's not a passive process is what I would tell you. It is an active process. We don't just post it, sit back and wait and see who expresses interest. We would be very aggressive in the sense of going and reaching out to people. The, the superintendent that needs to be in College Station may not even know they need to be here, right? Until we mention it to them and talk to them about that. And so we, we, we would be very active in that process of gathering, or gathering candidates. And then once we do that, we obviously vet the candidates. If we got 60 applicants, we wouldn't pretend to bring 60, 60 of those candidates to you for interviews. We would vet them according to their materials and credentials and according to what we know about them and according to whatever screening interview that we put in place. And we would conduct interviews with people either face-to-face or on the phone, depending on how well we know them, what we know about them, and so forth. And so as we have recently done the midway, when we, we talked to a lot of people on the phone and we brought a number of candidates in and sat down with them face-to-face, just as part of the screening process. And I suspect that we would do that again in College Station ISD as well. We would evaluate the candidates based on the rubric that, that we can develop, based on the candidate profile that you, that we developed together. And then so that that helps us figure out who, who best meets the profile and who we can, as we come to you and talk through the candidates, to give you really good information about them, especially as it relates to the candidate profile. We would provide the board with all the material and credentials from all the candidates at a certain time in the process. Obviously, the candidates, to some extent, want to remain anonymous until they know that they're a good candidate for the position. And then at the right time, then we can provide information to you about them in terms of the materials that they've submitted to us and the credentials they have. We would create a summary of all the candidates so you could see them quickly in terms of who they are, where they've been, what's the work that they have done. And then based on the number of candidates that you want to interview, we would help facilitate a process to get you to that number. If you want to interview four candidates or eight candidates, whatever that may be, then we would help facilitate a process to help get you to that number that you want to be at. Our commitment to you, obviously, would bring you candidates of the highest quality that want to be in College Station ISD and that would meet the needs of the district and would be a match for the profile as well. As you think about interviewing, we would help facilitate the board through a process to develop interview questions and just the whole final interview process. A process, there's no one way to do that. When you sit down with candidates, obviously, there'll probably be some questions and answers, but there may be other things that you want to see as well, and we would help facilitate that. And then the board, through the process, the, as you select to interview, the board would recommend, we would, the board reviews and recommends selected candidates to interview. Then we would work with your staff to schedule those interviews and then we would discuss important issues such as salary range and probable issues and so forth with, with each of the candidates. And so by the time you talk to people, we will have worked through a lot of the details related to the big pieces of the position so that when we bring you somebody that, that we know that they are interested in the work, that they understand the parameters by which you are operating by, and so that we would, we wouldn't bring you someone that is not interested in being the superintendent in College Station. It's a two-way interview process. They interview you as much as you interview them sometimes, but we cert, our commitment certainly would be to bring you people that are ready to be the superintendent in College Station ISD. And then we would, the board would interview candidates, then we would facilitate a discussion, if you would like for us to, of the board at the conclusion of those interviews to help you really process and think about those folks that you have interviewed so that you can land on the right person to be the next superintendent in College Station. The, the board determines the lone finalist, obviously, and the board president generally communicates with the lone finalist. The board determines a, a meeting date to officially name the lone finalist. And then we work with the communications department and local media outlets to, related to the naming of the lone finalist. There's a 21-day waiting period that's designed to get feedback on the candidate. And then the board officially names the lone finalist as superintendent and a contract is signed. And so as we think about the search process, that is a, a good overview of what we would help you do. I think the big piece for us is we want to listen to you, be responsive to you. We have ideas, but, and so we can provide a framework for you, but we also know that you have ideas and we want to certainly be responsive to those in terms of the process that I've just laid out. We also have a draft timeline. I think the key word here is draft, and I'll let Dr. Lancaster talk you through that.
This timeline is based on a closing date of July 1st of a contract signing. Totally up to you when you want that date to be. That can, you can make it a little bit faster than that. This is a pretty aggressive timeline. You can make it August 1st and give yourself an additional few weeks in here, but essentially you start, very first thing you do when you select a firm is you need to sit down and talk with that firm and talk about the timeline and the process and layout specifically. When do you want somebody to start? And everything else follows from there. The application opens fairly quickly after a firm is hired. And, and actually, we already have a list going. We can't tell you that because it's going to cost you to know who to fill the list, but we've got a list already started. The application has already started. People know about this opening. When Mike made his announcement last week, the process started. And our place would be then to start collecting those names. But in April, depending on how quickly you want to move with this, we would have whatever types of forums we would, you would want us to have, applications close. In this case, on May 19th, you would review a candidate pool around the 22nd through 24th of May to determine who it is, from, from however many we get, how many applications do you want to look at and then how many do you want to interview? And you would narrow that down. We would schedule first round interviews on this timeline, June 1st and 2nd, and then second round interviews on the 5th and 6th. June 7th and 8th would give you some days there for you and us to do some final recommendation checking. We would have already done some of that for you going into this, but then once you narrow it down, we would, we'd do some additional checking. If you would like to make a district visit, which is, districts, boards sometimes do that, you would do that in this time period. This timeline has you naming a lone finalist on June 9th. 21 days expires on July 1st, and that's when you would sign a contract. And then the new superintendent would report anytime after July 1, depending on when. You can shorten this a little bit. This is pretty aggressive, but you can also lengthen this if you want to and start, you know, the 1st of August. It doesn't matter. This is just a draft to show you how those steps play in there together. And then the next slide talks about our fees. We charge a flat $20,000. Incidental expenses, we're not, I think I live eight tenths of a mile from here. We're not going to charge you mileage. Eddie lives maybe two miles. We're not going to, you know, I can't imagine, other than we would place an ad. The most looked at place for superintendent searches is TexasISD.com, and we would place an ad there. It's about 200 bucks and, and maybe $300 for an elevated ad that has some color on it. But that's where everybody who's looking, looks at that, has our contact information as, as the search firm. And that would, that's really all we anticipate in incidental expenses. We can't imagine, we're not, no hotel bills for you since we live here. And then the next slide gives us just a little bit about our background. You know, Dr. Coulson, some of you better. I was a little disheartened to face Blaine Becker, who was a student of mine at South Knoll Elementary. And that's, you know, that's really hard. He, I think of maybe, when I think of students, Blaine's age there till about, they're about 12. And, and that obviously hasn't passed, but you know Eddie's resume, this is mine. The thing I would tell you is I went first through 12th grade at A&amp;M Consolidated. My sisters did. My dad went first through 12th grade at A&amp;M Consolidated. He started in the school building on the A&amp;M campus, moved up here and, and I, for good luck, I'm wearing his A&amp;M Consolidated high school class ring from 1945. Go Tigers. So, and I was the mascot. If that carries, I wore the Tiger suit, if that carries any additional weight. But I was a teacher here, assistant principal, principal, opened Pebble Creek, and not only had a great education as a student, attended South Knoll, later served as principal at South Knoll. Not only did I have a great education as a student, my career started here as my first teaching job at Consolidated. And, and I had a 37-year career that was fantastic because of the education I got as a student and the career start I got here, 16 years in College Station ISD. And I think that's it. Dr. Coulson, anything to add? And we have time for questions, anything for us?
We would love to answer questions if you have them. Certainly, we would, we would love to do this search for you and consider it an honor. So if you have questions for us, we'd love to answer those.
Y'all mentioned the vetting process, and then in the timeline, you have the background check really pretty late. So tell me about background checks and vetting before we would ever see the candidates or in that process.
Go ahead.
A lot of these applicants we're going to know already. Or if Eddie and I don't know them personally, we know someone who does know them. There are not many folks in the state who you're going to consider as viable candidates that we don't know personally or have a close contact with. And so our job is to do our due diligence while this process is ongoing. And as people apply, then we're calling not only them, but people who've worked with them and districts they've worked with. And so that process is going behind the scenes. And so once you name a lone finalist, that has already really occurred. Board members may want to then contact people they know. You may, from Tasvee conferences, you may know somebody from Muleshoe ISD who's worked with this candidate you've picked, and you know that board member, you happened to meet them at a conference. And so you do some, some of your own personal checking at that time. But most of that will occur long before they even get into the interview process.
So you, you already said, do you think this is an aggressive timeline? So just so we know, you wouldn't probably suggest making it any tighter because it's already pretty tight?
I mean, if, if you, you'd got to decide, when do you want somebody to report for duty? If you name somebody and sign a contract on July 1st, you know, they got to move. And even if they, even if they haven't moved yet, if they, if you want to start, like the superintendent in Midway, he has a senior in high school. He came from Marble Falls. He's got an apartment there for the spring semester so his youngest can finish high school. His wife is moving in, in the summer, this coming summer. You can do the same thing here. It's hard to start, you can back it up a couple of weeks maybe at the most. The longer you have the search open, the more your pool will grow. But we've got about a four or five-week timeframe here from when you're collecting names. Really, if you don't know by, after a couple of weeks, you're going to apply for this job, then we're not interested in you. I mean, people are going to know already are thinking about it.
Right.
And I'm sure Mike's received a couple of phone calls from friends. We know people who are already interested in this job, but you can speed it up. But then what would be the point of that? Do you want them to start July, June 20th instead of July 1st?
It's just a question.
It's hard to get here that quick.
No, and then I'm going to put, put your teachers' hats on. When would you, as a teacher of a district, we, you know, half of our, half of our employees are teachers, when would you like to know that a superintendent at least is being solidified? And that's my thought about pushing it further back.
Sure.
If, if I may, Dr. Coulson, remember, Mr. Hall, there's a 21-day wait period. So if you're moving for a hire on July 1, you're going to make that name the first middle part of June, which will, is, is not official. That's why you have the 21-day wait, but would be a mechanism for communication at that point.
So June 9th on this timeframe, the public would know who was named lone finalist. That's pretty quick. And then you've got to wait those three weeks.
To, and to answer your question directly, I think, given the timing that we have, I think that would be, if I were a teacher in College Station ISD, I think that would be fair and reasonable.
Let me piggyback on that question just real quick. The only reason I'm saying that, because it has to do with the timeline. With College Station, maybe I'm sounding arrogant here, being a highly sought-after district to come to, hasn't been open in 16 years, I think, if I recall, to, to external from what I remember. Does the timeline, whether it's this one or a different one, does that timeline help or hinder the search as far as getting to that end, end goal?
Um, I mean, I, just based on the timing of where we are in the year, I, I think it, it helps, honestly. The, you know, what is the right, the perfect time? I'm not sure, but this, this, people know that school year is ending and they're gearing up for a new school year. Ideally, I think a superintendent would really love that opportunity as opposed to starting in October or January or February. And so, and I guess that would be up to individual preferences, but in my mind, that makes a lot of sense.
Both my starts as superintendent were January. It's either January or July, August in general. The vast, the vast majority of the superintendents start either summer or midterm, and that's very common. So summer's perfect.
Brad, I've got a, a couple of questions, but the first one's fairly lighthearted. Are you related to Greg?
No.
Okay. You both have very similar choice and eye wear.
I don't know, does it help us?
Yeah. She could be a good friend. He might be.
No, he was, he was a mediator this morning for me. Second question was, most of your experience appears as with CFO searches as opposed to superintendents? Could you just, we don't have a lot of time, but, you know, tell us why, other than the College Station connection, it'd be better to go with y'all as opposed to a firm that has more superintendent search experience?
Sure. That's a fair question. When I first began the process of becoming part of into learning, one of the, the goals that I had was to do superintendent searches. One thing led to the next, and I was busy doing other things in the sense of a lot of strategic planning, these institutes that I talked about, a lot of bond planning. We've recently done the bond planning in Klein, strategic planning in Keller and in Klein. So lots of districts over the course, and so it just got pushed a little bit to the back burner. The CFOs just happened, superintendent friend called and said, would you be willing? And I, yes. And one thing led to the next, and there's certainly a need within the state for that. When Brad was able to join us is really when we kicked off this effort, and we both just have had the goal of doing superintendent searches throughout the, the state. And so this has just been the impetus to get us, to get us started. We did the midway one. We want to do this one, and we want, we want to do more. So we feel like the CFO searches have certainly greased the wheel for us in terms of process and, and certainly we know lots of folks. So that being said, it's been a goal of ours to do that, and now seems like a, it seems to be working in the sense that we did one earlier this fall, or pardon me, this spring, and hopefully one now as well.
I have a quick question. So just to make sure I'm understanding, you guys, the two of you would be our point of contact. You would be working directly with us?
Correct.
Okay. Not somebody else?
We work for the board, not the candidates.
Right. But I just want to make sure that it's, that it's you two.
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Yes. It would not be anyone else. It would be the two of us.
Okay.
They're not flying somebody in from out of town.
No. I don't know. Do you think we have somebody?
I don't know anybody from out of town to, I mean, to do this, but no.
No, it would be the two of us, direct contact with us.
I have a question about, kind of related to the timeline, but specifically about gathering the input and community input and building our profile of the, the candidate. You kind of, on this timeline, you show that happening after we post the, the job opening. And I don't know if that's what you would normally recommend or if it's because we're trying to compress a little bit. So I guess, so maybe the question is, do we, how important do you feel that gathering that community input is? And do we have time to do it with this timeline if you think we need it?
I think it's, it's extremely important. You know, every district is, got their own context, but all things being equal, I think it's important for you as the board to get input from the community. I think the posting piece of it and the, and the community input should run simultaneously. I don't think you need to post it, close it, and then do the community input. I think they need to run simultaneously. It may help you recruit candidates during that open period of time, just depending on what you've learned. The community forums can be done in a variety of ways. They can be open, you know, we're having a community forum come. It could be where the board invites certain people to come and to meet with us based on your knowledge of who they are. And, or both, right? It doesn't have to be one or the other. It could be both. And so I think running simultaneously makes a lot of sense. And then, like I said, we have some ideas about how that might look for you. You, obviously, we would work for you and be responsive to what you thought about that as well.
My, my question about y'all's kind of judgment, because I think that's a real differentiator. Y'all are from here, y'all have worked here, parents of CSISD. But let's say that we look, we established a rubric and we said, you know, Mike Martindale is a CFO, we want a superintendent CFO experience. But then, and so y'all going through a rubric and you're, you're narrowing that search, but then Mr. Lancaster comes in and he's got a good resume, but he has no CFO experience. How do we make sure that the, the Brad Lancasters of the world don't slip through a rubric?
Well, for, for good or bad, you would be relying on our wisdom, right? Our wisdom and our expertise related to this in particular. And so we feel like we would have, we, we have a good radar in terms of working with the candidate profile that you have, but also intuitive enough to know who might not fit perfect, but would be a good match. Ultimately, obviously, that's the board's decision to determine if that would be the case, but we believe that we're intuitive enough to know and familiar enough with College Station ISD to understand who that might be as well.
Then on a practical note, you said there's a lot of interest, I guess, in the, in the hundreds or dozens. How, how many people do you think are interested in this position? How many do you think are viable candidates? And how many do you expect to winnow that down to and bring before the board?
Winnow. You just trying to get the list now? Is that what you're trying?
We'll.
Well, it's volume versus timeline is, I just, I've never done this before.
I, I suspect that we would get close to 60 official resumes, 60 or so, of people who expressed interest. Of those 60, I would, probably 50 are qualified to do it. You get some random things that happen with people who apply who are not really qualified but want to be the superintendent. And then from there, of those 50, I think there are probably 10 or 15 that are really good candidates. Of that 10 or 15, I would feel comfortable saying that we could bring you five or six, that you could hire any of them, I would hope, and that would do a really, really good job. Now, we, Brad and I haven't actually talked about that, but I'll let him respond to that as well.
I think that's fair. I think that's a, yeah, I think 40 to 60, we had about 45 apply from Midway. That's a good, common number. College Station will be a very attractive job for a variety of reasons. Excellent district, very smooth transition, Mike's not being fired, it's a great place to. to live and grow. Anybody who's been to A&amp;M wants to come back here, of course, but to your earlier question, Blaine, no, no candidate will check maybe every single box on a rubric. And so if, this is your search, if you want to look at and read all 60 applications, you can. It will help you comb through those. If you want us to comb through the 60 and bring you 20 to look at, and narrow that down to 10 and talk about them, the sky's the limit on the process. You drive that, and it is your comfort zone. We don't want to say, we're going to look at the 60, and we're just going to bring you the five you meet. You want to be involved in that process, we want you to do that as much as possible. So that will eliminate a candidate who doesn't have CFO experience, but who's a good candidate. You're going to see that person if you want to, and you're going to say, what do you, tell me about this person, this man or this woman, what do you know about them? And actually, we have a candidate, a Cracker Jack candidate, who has CFO experience, who's really, really good, really good candidate.
Just, I have a rough guess to ask the question, but just for going forward to level the field between other applicants. Over the, some total of y'all's experience in the education field, how many interviews and hiring of principal or above did y'all participate in? Rough numbers, dozens I'd take.
Oh, I don't know.
More than four dozen?
Just blown my head, I'm not sure.
As superintendent? How many principals and above?
There, there, there are some principals in College Station ISD that I know I hired.
I claimed Teresa Cott. I hired Teresa Cott, was my assistant principal.
Many.
I don't know, yeah, yes.
Yeah, 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 I mean, I could give you that number, it would take some, oh, was assistant superintendents, athletic directors, directors, 50 or more? Easy.
Sure.
You were superintendent how long?
Eight years.
14. Assistant superintendent, you know, also, anyway. Joshua, back to your question about, I mean, we've done one. I mean, I think it's just to save what it is, we've done one superintendent search and a number of CFO searches. What you get with us, not only are local boys, local products of this school district who live and work here, we, we have to succeed at this because we shop here and go to church here, and we don't want to look foolish. But what you're also getting is two years out of the superintendency from me, Eddie is super connected through Into Learning with principals and above with their institutes. I'm a recent retiree, and you're getting, this timeline is not going to vary by search firm. The process isn't really going to vary by search firm. You're hiring personality, experience, and reputation. And I think we both have good reputations in the state. We know, either we know everybody, or we know somebody who knows everybody. And I think we, and we bring the added quality of we are vested here personally in this district, and we, my father would be highly ashamed if I botched this up.
Anything else? Hey, we appreciate y'all being here.
Thank you, thanks for the opportunity.
Much appreciate, thank y'all so much. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I could, I walked often, but today I'm going to drive.
Yes. They were just waiting outside. No, they just, instead of having everybody wait half an hour, an hour, we tried to manage and be cognizant of their schedules.
All right, I believe we have the representatives from Tasby, so the floor is y'all's. We appreciate y'all being here.
Good afternoon, board members. Robert Duran, I'm with Texas Association of School Board. Want to start off by just thanking you all for this opportunity. We're excited about it. We really appreciate you all considering Tasby, and we think we can do a really great job for you. I'd like to start off, first of all, by telling you a little bit, something about what you already know about your own district. Did a little bit of homework about College Station ISD. I didn't know a lot about it, but I do now. And I want to commend you, and maybe I've got some of these numbers wrong, you may want to fact check them, but a little over 14,000 kids, a solid B rating, and B rating in a lot of your subcategories, which is really strong. If you really believe in those ratings anymore, and a lot of people do, so that's important. I know it's important for your community. Your teacher experience is higher than the state average, about 4% higher than across the state. Your dropout rate and chronic absentee rate is lower than the state in every single demographic group. 94% of your students graduate and receive diplomas on time or earlier, and less than 1%, matter of fact, 0.2% dropout rate for students K-12. And all of this with approximately, I believe, 37% population of low socioeconomic status. And I bring that up for a couple of reasons. One is just to commend you, Superintendent Martindale and the leadership team here, the school board. It says a lot about your district, and we feel like it's important to communicate these things to candidates, to know what kind of situation they're getting into. You've got national recognition, I notice your college board a ways back, got national recognition, your performing arts is really strong, and your community support with the passing of the $78 million bond, the TRE election. Also, community support in the women, I believe, of Bryant College Station, is that right? Some, some group that really helps fundraise for you all. And the men who can cook, I got to come to see that event, that's got to be a really big deal. But I somewhat joke on that, but it says a lot about candidates coming in, that there's strong community support here for this community, for this district, and that's very commendable. Also, I noticed, this is just kind of a personal interest of mine, because I think so much of the Holesworth Center, I understand that you've got a partnership with the Holesworth Center, so you're really committed to professional development. And again, let me repeat myself, these are the type of things that we would point out to anyone that calls our team and asks, tell us about College Station ISD. Because we know, as far as situational awareness is concerned, that a candidate that comes in here, he or she needs to be ready to pick up on this momentum, this success. And I believe I'm safe to say that in y'all's eyes and the community's eyes, you're looking for improvement and continuous improvement, so they need to be prepared for that. So the challenge that we, you all have before you is to continue the growth that you've experienced over the last 10 years, lately under Superintendent Martindale for the last three years, and the community expects that as well. So the question is, who should, who should you pick to partner and pick the superintendent that's going to accomplish this? We feel like that Tasby should be your choice for two reasons mainly. Number one, and Mr. Felton here is going to elaborate on this a little bit more when I give up the mic, but we do more searches than any other search firm you're going to hear from today. We do more in the state, and we feel like experience matters. Also, as far as experience is concerned, we're the Texas Association of School Boards. So we serve boards as members and not just our customers. Our why at Texas Association of School Boards is to make sure that we provide efficiency and problem solve products and services for school boards across the state. So it's more than just a search firm you're hiring, you're hiring a partner as a member of TASB. Second, we are very proud of our customer service record. We're going to offer you references, but we feel, we hope that you go outside of those references, talk to other board members that you know that we've worked with, and we're very proud of the success rate that we've had in placing superintendents and working with school boards. We will not charge you or until we have completed the process and you are completely satisfied. And we also have a guarantee in who we place here that may give you a little sense of security in case, for whatever reason, things don't work out with who we place here, and Mr. Felton will elaborate on that. But I'll end where I began, and that is, thank you for having us out here, it means a lot to us. We appreciate your membership, the Texas Association of School Boards, and even, even if we are not chosen, we, because we are TASB, we're going to assist you in any way we can in this process. So thank you very much, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Felton.
Thank you, Dr. Duran. Also, with our team today is Mr. Jack Dameron. Jack is one of our field reps for our association, and then I guess our, probably the backbone of what we do is, what's your name? Christina, she is, she's the one that runs the whole thing behind the scenes that, that makes what we do work. And she's kind of the brain trust in everything. Speak of Jack, and Jack is former superintendent as well, and, and he represents others, other field service reps that are throughout the entire state. And the, we, we're the only group that has boots on the ground that professionally walk into every school district in the state of Texas. So we pick up knowledge of every, every superintendent that's out there. So we gain that personal knowledge as well as professional knowledge that we get to, we have when we, when superintendents start applying in certain areas, that helps us because of our field reps, they know these folks. And so it helps in that particular situation. So Kerry, is this, you just pushed the button? That's it? Oh, good, there it is. The other member that's not on our team there, Dr. Marion Strauss, I will tell you that she wanted to be here, but she's actually left on vacation out of the country. And she is our resident graduate of Texas A&amp;M. And so, and she reminds me of that quite often, as a matter of fact. So anyway, she would be a member of this team, but she chose to go on vacation. So anyway, that's part of our team. This is what we do, we manage the planning, the profile session, the advertisement, application, recruitment, contact the references, interview process, and contract negotiations. And so those are some of the steps that we will go through. It's very similar to what you will hear, or what you have heard already in other things. We just have a few things that we do that are a little different. Our search process, our board preparation, and we have team commitments that we, we want you to commit to the process as well as we commit to the process with you. And as we walk, go through this entire long journey together, we create, we create a profile with you to kind of understand, what are you really looking for in your next superintendent? We want, we want to know that. You as an individual board member, and then you maybe as collective as a board, what are you looking for in your new superintendent? Because that helps us when we get down to the candidates, and you start reviewing the candidates as well. You can see there, this is some of our profile interview and selection and how we go through this. We will have a profile session, we attach a survey link to your district's website. So folks in your district, in the community, teachers, staff, folks can have input, and they can go online and fill out this information. And then we provide that back to you, each individual board member, in the report once we collect all that information back. We send it to you, so you see what people are actually saying out there in the community. Now, I know that you probably already know what they're saying, and, and I know that there's not anybody unhappy out there, and, but, so what it might ever be, you will get to see what that's all about. And so after you receive that report, we, we ask you to hold on to it, because once we get down into the candidate selection and interview process, we want to make sure that we're, we're bringing that back out. I remember as a campus principal, sometimes, back in the olden days, that when we would submit our, we'd have to submit our campus plan to the board, and then after, after that, and the board said, oh, that's nice, and we took it back and it sat on the shelf, and we went about what we normally do. But this is not the campus plan. This is something that we do, you know, we try to integrate into our selection process. So the deadline date passes for the applications, that usually stays open around three to four weeks, or whatever time that you feel like is necessary. And then we, in our application part of this, we have a little different thing, and it's, it's not just turning in a resume to us, it's, it's pretty, a little extensive and intensive for the candidates to fill out. And so what they have to do is, they go through that and fill out the process, so it's the application, it's their resume, their transcripts, and their certification. Those are all documents that are required, and inside the application now are videos of each candidate. Candidates must complete a video of themselves answering three questions, and that way you as a board member get to see the candidates actually in advance. Now, I'm not going to say it's the be all end all of everything in your selection, but it's another tool that you can use to expedite the process of which candidates would I like to have come back in for an interview. So it gives you an opportunity to see them and hear them prior to bringing anyone in for an interview. And then, once we come back, we will sit down with you as a team, and we will go over every candidate that you would like to discuss. And as I said, you will receive this candidate information prior to us getting here. So you have about seven to eight days to go over all the candidate's information that you'd like to review, talk about, and then we will come to a meeting to discuss names of the candidates of which you warranted your attention. Following that, we will sit down and we bring back that report that I mentioned, and we, as we start to work through the interview questions of the candidates that you've selected, and most boards that we work with usually select six candidates to bring in on a first round of interviews. And then we will get those interview questions brought up, and then we will have all that set ready for the first round of interviews. And then after you go through your first round of interviews, then you will determine as a board, okay, we, we've heard six now, and that's an arbitrary number, we can, that can go up or down. And then you will decide, and most boards usually return three, they invite three to come back for a second round of interviews, okay? And then we will talk about how that process works. The first round of interviews is very structured, it's very formatted. The second round, not so much, it's more of informal, dive deep, if you will, getting to know the candidate and things like that, who, will this candidate be able to lead us into the next years ahead of College Station ISD. So we've gone through the first round of interviews, the second round of interviews, and now we come down to the selection, and then you will determine who your candidate, what we call a candidate of choice. The candidate of choice is, in case you, as three board members, would like to travel to that candidate's home district and visit with folks there, you can certainly do that. And then usually it's the next night that you come back and name that candidate the lone finalist at superintendent schools. And then you start the 21 day waiting period, and then that's when, you know, after the 21 days is complete, that's when you can vote to hire the new superintendent. So that's kind of the process that we go through, you know, that's kind of it in a nutshell. Trust me, it's more extensive than that. It lasts from the, if you hire us from the planning date to the vote to hire date is about 120 calendar days if you do the whole full meal deal, okay? That can, we can shorten that, in fact, we work, working with a district now that they wanted it much shorter than that, and so we've accomplished that, and we're doing that for them. So we don't have a cookie cutter situation where you say, okay, this is it. So we don't have a cookie cutter situation where you say, okay, this is it. You know, we mold it to what you want, your desires as a board. That's what we mold the search around. And so making the transition, so what we have for you at the end of that, you know, sometimes at the end, search firms are gone and you don't see them again. But what happens is within the first 90 days, we encourage you to have what we call our transition meeting. And one of our Board Development Services members, either Kay Douglas, you might be familiar with, or Orin Moore, will come and visit with you on how to transition now from the outgoing superintendent now to the new superintendent, okay? And that, that is, there's, if you use TASB, that fee's waived, and it just costs the mileage from here to Austin, or from Kay Douglas and Huntsville. And so it's pretty inexpensive to do that. And they go over all the development of how to make a transition, what the new superintendent's expectations are, what are your expectations for the new superintendent, and kind of tie in, tie up the loose ends, if you will. And that's what all that is a part of, is that goes in with our package as well. So in the first, first interview round where we sit down and go over everything with you, you get three hours of board training credit. If you take up the transition meeting, you also get additional three hours of board training credit. So you could come out with six hours of board training credit, which that might help some of you, or maybe not all, any of you. So that's, that's how it works. These are some of our testimonials of what we've done. I will tell you, we're familiar, very familiar with your area because we've done Bryan ISD, we've just done Caldwell ISD, we've done Navasota ISD, we've done Huntsville ISD, and some of the smaller districts in and around your area. So we've done all those, conducted all those searches for them. So that's kind of it. There are some of the other ones that we've done. Waco Superintendent, we didn't do the one that's there now. We did the one prior to the one that was there.
Looking at your timeline, and you kind of touched on this, you said 120 days, and you said you got one that's shorter now. How quick is that? I mean, how, how much can you condense that?
We were actually doing that within about 90 days, okay? In this particular district, they wanted, it's a small district, and they wanted to have this board complete the search prior to any board elections. So we've condensed it. Now, we started, to give you an idea, we started the end of February with that. And so we're able to get it all in, and with spring break and then the 21 days at school type, we can do that.
And then the other thing, as I was looking for, a summary of events, where in this process is background checks and background information completed on candidates?
We will do that. You know, we do, do all the reference checks, you know, for the board and things like that. And then we will assist the board and, and a third-party vendor. Because it's, we can't do that because of the, you know, it violates our, we're a third-party vendor, and we can't do that legally. So we have to give that to a third, to another vendor that's actually does that. But we work in conjunction with the board to get that done.
Question for you, on your, your optional expenses that we may incur, just given our average district size, what could we expect those optional expenses to be?
The fee that we quoted is, I think, $10,005, and everything's included inside that fee. The optional expenses are if, when you invite the candidates back for a second round, it's customary for 100% of our boards, they, they pay for those expenses of the candidates returning back to your district, okay? The other is if the board, three of the board members take a site visit to the candidate's home district, that's the other exception. So those, the only two exceptions. So everything else is inside there, advertising, the whole thing. And one thing I might add that I didn't mention is that with us, you get a national search for free. Because I'm the past president of the National Association of Superintendent Searchers, and so our, once you hire us, it goes out to all of our sister groups across the United States. So anybody from, from, you know, northeast New England area, all the way to the west coast area can go to their school board association and find your search listed in their, in their area. And it doesn't cost you anything. So.
Who, who on your team would we actually be working with? And would it be consistent throughout the whole process, or would it?
You will see us and Dr. Strauss. So the one that's missing, yes.
All right. It'll be four of you plus her, and then if we went into the transition period afterwards, then it would be the other person?
It will be, it will be one of our Board Development Services. You might, you might know Kay Douglas or from Sessions. You know Orin, okay, from Orin. Yeah. Okay, so you know Orin and Kay, so it's going to be one of those, either one of those. And I can't emphasize the, the importance of that transition session. If you're familiar with Bernie ISD, Bernie actually did a session at one of our summer leadership institutes where they presented on the importance of the TASB transition session. So it's, it's very important if, you know, whether you use this or not, it's still available to you, it just costs the fee to do it.
I would just add to that, it's especially true if you hire someone who's never been a superintendent before, that we highly recommend, again, even if we don't get the search, we would recommend that as former superintendents, that you, you do that transition for him or her. It would help a lot, clear communication and help just build a team right from the beginning.
How many y'all currently doing right now in the state?
Right now, we are in the middle of Arlington ISD, and we have some smaller districts that are, I think, the largest district is like 1,600, and I think we're doing three of those.
McGregor, Venus.
Yeah, McGregor, Venus, and Giddings. Giddings, we're finished, and Giddings is on the tail end of theirs right now.
Yeah, I looked online, and y'all are associated with quite a few, so I think there's 70 vacancies right now, including this one.
And, you know, as we said, we do more searches than anybody else because we have a large team that works with us. You know, you see the portfolio of those. Even though they're not here, they're still going to be working. They work for every search that we conduct. And so they're working behind the scenes, supporting the team that's actually there.
And did y'all do the Bryan search?
Yes.
When?
When?
Which one was that?
They did, they did Wentzback and Ginger, they did the last two.
They did both of the last two.
Yeah.
I'm answering for them, but I think that's accurate.
Yeah, that's probably how I should ask, not the dates, the who, right? That's, yeah.
Yeah, that's the best way to do it, Mike, is when, who was there? And then they lost her to Fort Bend, and she went to Fort Bend, and then they hired the new one. So we did both of those, yes.
And let me just follow up, kind of on the question was asked earlier about condensing the schedule, a little more specifics about where we would condense this specifically on the front end, and then what would be your suggestions, if that's what we would like to do?
The only thing we can't condense is the 21 days. So other than that, we can shorten that down, and that would have to be, we'd have to kind of massage the front end where we have the opening of the, the application and the application deadline date. Those are some areas that we can shorten in. But whether you hire us or not, like I told one board not too long ago, you need to get, if there's a certain date that you're looking at to hire somebody by, you need to get, you need to get moving, you know? And I say that because, you know, I've done this now for 16 years, and I've done it fall, spring, summer, but your optimal times, you're in right now. And your quality superintendents are getting picked, and, and that's why we want to strike qualifiers hot. And, you know, and the thing about it is, you know, we just don't sit back and wait for people to come to us. We go out, and if we see somebody or know somebody via our field reps that says, hey, you know, this person would be a good fit in College Station, we're going to make contact with them. Or perhaps you've heard of somebody at a, at a convention or something like that, and say, you know, I like that person, I wonder if they'd be interested? We'll make that contact for you. And so we're actively involved in, in recruitment. Now, I will tell you that we don't strong-arm anybody because every member of, every member, district member is a, is a member of TASB. And so I don't want my phone ringing, that used to be Jim Crow, saying, Butch, why are you trying to take this superintendent away from this member district? And I can say, yes, we're not. We're encouraging that person to take a look. And so that's what we're, we're doing. So, thank you.
And I know y'all have a big team, but I guess just for, for Jack and Mr. Duran, since 2006, how many principals and hire did y'all personally hire when y'all were still practitioners?
Principals?
Principals and hire, admin, staff, athletic directors?
As a member of TASB?
No, as a superintendent.
Oh, goodness. As a, let me be clear on the question, as a superintendent, how many central office folks and principals did I hire?
Yeah.
Well, I had 100 principals in, in San Antonio, so we'd probably hire 25 a year. And Socorro, when I was there, you know, we had probably 40 campuses. So I almost say easily over 10 years of my career, over 150 principals easily. And central office, not so many, but, because there weren't as many to, to hire, but I'd say probably 20 over time.
With us hiring outside, or looking to hire outside for the first time in a while, what's some of the risks or benefits of doing that?
Of hiring outside?
Yeah.
Well, the one of the, I'll start with the benefits, you just get a wider array of candidates coming in. That, that, I guess the downside of that, they would not know the district as well as, as an insider would, some of the things that are working here. But I, I don't know. I mean, I would encourage you, I don't, I don't, I may take a risk here, I don't know who there might, who the inside candidates may be. I think if this board is, is really high on him or her, that I think that they should be interviewed, if they, if you think they're a legitimate candidate. But at the same time, you, you may be surprised at what's out there. I mean, I think it gives you a, a benefit to see what other talent's out there and what's coming up. Just, and I'm going to take the liberty to say, if you do have a candidate that, that you, that's internal, I think some boards do what's called just a courtesy interview for candidates that are, they don't feel wholeheartedly that this candidate may be legitimate for the superintendency, but they want to keep him or her on board and not lose them, say they're on the executive team. I mean, it's up to the board to do that. But I'm more of the mind that, that someone should talk to him or her after the interview if they don't get it. All those professional niceties and responsibilities, I think, are important. And maybe give them feedback, what they need to do to grow. Maybe that's more than what you asked for, but that's been my experience. And then one last thing, and when I've been through this, if there was an internal candidate that, that the board was considering, they'd come to me, and I, if I told them that he or she wasn't ready, that was on, I thought it was my responsibility to go talk to that candidate so that the board wouldn't have to go through that and say they, they want you here, they want you to stay, you'll be a candidate in three years, but here's what the feedback is with the board at this time. Not to discourage them, but just to give them open, honest feedback. That was a big answer to that, but I've been experienced in that, for sure.
Jack, image you.
How many principals and central?
Well, I worked, I was superintendent at a smaller district. It was about 1,500 students, a little over 1,500. But I worked at the Education Service Center down in Region One in South Texas, and we covered districts all the way from Brownsville to Laredo, large and small alike. And I was the executive director there in my last gig. And I, I was constantly looking for quality personnel to bring to the service center, and it was a revolving door because we would train them up, and then they would go out as superintendents or assistant superintendents to our districts. We knew we had a good circulation of personnel. So that was probably where I did the most work in that particular area. But it was always seeking the best qualified person for the job that fit the organization. Yes, sir?
So back to the timeline question, if we were to say, if we said we wanted to have a contract signed by July 1st, what is your, what are your thoughts around that?
You know, and
It's like 90 days.
As I said, there's no, and it's, you would need to get started pretty quick. Because your 21 days is going to back up into June, and you know what May's like. You know, you as board members know what May's like because you got to be, you know, you don't have to be, but you're expected to be at everything. And so, you know, we try to, you know, massage the, the timeline around your schedules. You know, that's what we, that's what we try to do. And, and we can, trust me, I've just, we, I just massaged the schedule for Venus ISD, and, and they've got a gentleman that will, he, which is fine. I, I understand, I appreciate it. He goes to church Sunday and Wednesday nights, and then he works shift nights. And, and he wants to be at every meeting, and he's supposed to be at every meeting. So we've tried to work the schedule so we can get everything in, you know, and, and they've got to, you know, they're looking to close out the, right at the 1st of June. And so, and they haven't even, we're not even to their application deadline date yet. So it's going to, you know, I told them, I said, you know, put on your seat belts because here we go, and it can be done. You know, we just, you know, but here's the point I want to make. I don't want to rush through it, okay? Rush is not, to me, is not worth it. And if you're looking for somebody that can come in and say, I can have you a superintendent here next week, that's not us. You know, you don't, we don't, we don't play that. And, you know, we, but if that, and I don't think that's what you're looking for. But we're, you know, we do, we're in that service-minded business, and, and we, that's what we're expecting, and I know that's what you expect from us, and we, we're going to be expecting it from you. And so, but we will work to do our very best to get to that, you know, to that timeline that you want.
Yeah, I just want to underscore that, it was something Butch said, that it kind of puts pressure on the board, just heads up on that. I mean, it's like our Arlington board right now, rather than having two weeks to look at the applications and, and condense it down to seven, they, they decided it was okay to have five days to do that. That's just an example of eliminating a week from that. So it's a commitment from the board. I just wanted to underscore that because you all have a lot of the responsibility. And then, of course, we, we get out right away and tell our candidates, this is a tight timeline, like we're doing for Arlington right now, and you need to get on it. So we have those connections to do that as well.
And if I can, the, the main thing is, is that candidates want to know who's doing the search so they know where to apply. And that way, it's, it's there, and they don't have to go, okay, well, you know, who's, who's got this, who's holding this ball right now? And so, you know, to use the football vernacular, it's like the old triple option, okay, well, which, which person am I supposed to watch here? And, you know, that's the thing, and that's, you know, as long as the candidates know where to apply, how to reach out to the consultants that are doing the search, that's the important thing.
All right. Anything else? We appreciate y'all making the trip and coming on over.
Thank you. And I want to say just one last thing. The fee that you pay us does not go into our pockets. It doesn't go help to pay on our car payment or something like that. Folks, Texas Public Schools needs support, and TASB is on the front line every day supporting Texas Public Schools. Because if you're watching what's going on in Austin, money's trying to be pulled away underneath, you know, to support Texas Public Schools. And we're there fighting to keep Texas Public Schools open because we think it's the best way, I'm sorry, I'm preaching, the best thing that's out there. And you know that, you are an example of that, you represent that, and that's what we do. And so, you know, that's why we feel like it's our value-added difference, you know, it's, we're supporting what everybody's out there fighting for. So, anyway.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I know we're over time, but I wanted to add something that we, we've added just as a feature lately on the search that I've been working on. And that is the option to interview each one of you for, I'm doing a, I did like a 20-minute, 30-minute Zoom for each board member in Arlington ISD. And it's just to get your perspective. You know, our belief is that the new superintendent is going to work very closely with two groups, that's you all and the executive team. And Arlington also, this was new for us, they also allowed me to go interview the executive team at a very high level, nothing personal, because I've been on the executive team, I've left an executive team and built it up myself, and we're going to interview, and I think their input is extremely important. Y'all may have different feelings about that, but we're certainly open to offer you that as an option for each one of you and, and the executive team, as a group, by the way, the executive team. So just keep that in mind, and that'll also go into your, you know, the questions that we ask our candidates, what we share with the candidates about what to expect coming in, et cetera. So that's for your consideration. I apologize for not including I apologize for not including that earlier.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Yeah, and water's good, too. Hi there, I'm Karen Rue.
Hi.
How y'all doing?
Thank you.
Hey, sir.
That was about to happen.
Thank you.
We'd like to welcome the team from Walsh Gallegos. So the floor is yours. We appreciate you all being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm Christine Vadio. I think we've probably met most of y'all. It's a pleasure to be here this afternoon. It's a, it's a honestly novel for me to, to be here with you in the prospect of a superintendent search. I've worked for the board for probably since about 2005, and this is the first time I've ever, I've ever seen you all in this posture, so it's exciting. This is an exciting thing to do, and I hope you all are excited about it because it's honestly pretty fun. In the grand scheme of things you have to do as a school board member, hiring a superintendent is a big deal. It's one of the biggest things you can do to shape and directly impact the future of your school district. So it's fun work and it's exciting work, and I think you all are poised to have a really great search, no matter what you do. This is a great district. It's been near and dear to my heart for a long time, and so it's really a privilege to be here today. With me today is Dr. Karen Rue.
Hi.
She is a distinguished retired superintendent and all-around knowledgeable-
Oh, go on, go on.
Professional in her own right, so I'll let her introduce herself. We will talk to you a little bit about what we have in mind as a, as an organization for your search and how that will look, but I wanted to give Dr. Rue a chance to introduce herself, and then we'll take whatever questions you have.
Well, great. Well, thank you so much, and thank you for allowing us to be here today. It's, it's good to see you, and it's a real pleasure to be here, truly is. My name is Karen Rue. As Christine said, I am a, an educator, have a long career in public education, retired as a superintendent from Northwest ISD in 2016, and have since taught at the university level, both at Baylor University and at University of North Texas, Darren Ditten, and I live in Fort Worth. I'm an Aggie myself, got my doctorate at A&amp;M, so always feel like I'm coming home, you know, when we do this type of thing. One other thing I would share with you, and we place it in your folder, I'm currently also an executive superintendent for TASB, Texas Association of School Administrators. And in that role, I mentor and serve as an executive coach to first-year superintendents, and I'm currently coaching for first-year superintendents in the state. At one point or another, I was asked if I'd write, contribute to an article, an article to the school administrator, the AASA magazine, and I included this month's article for you. I only contribute about three a year, but it was just when Christine called me last week and, you know, talked about this search, I said, I've got to include it just because. And this one is about a superintendent retiring, and what are some of the ways that can be helpful to a board as they prepare to their search for their next superintendent. So serendipity, it came out in this month's magazine, so I just pulled it down this morning and made copies for you. So I'll leave it at that.
And so I'll just talk briefly about how we, how we do searches at the firm and with our education consultants. The number one thing we want to stress is that it's your process, and I think you'll find that if you look through one of the documents that we've included for you is the fact sheet, and it short, sort of sets out the roles of the school board, the law firm, and then your educational consultant, who we partner with. And our goal really is to make the search what you want it to be. There are certain aspects of it, if you've heard from some other groups so far, you probably have a similar, you know, a flavor for what it's going to be like. There are certain components of the process that are what they are. You know, we'll meet with you to develop a profile, hear what you want, post the job. We will handle the administrative process of dealing with applications. We will consider people that we think might be a good fit for the job for you to consider. We do not have people that we are looking to place in jobs, and that's maybe a little bit different from some others. I don't know who all you've heard from today, but we are not, we're not looking to find jobs for somebody else. We're looking to make a good board superintendent relationship for y'all. And I think a thing that sets us apart in that is our sort of ongoing working relationship with the district, and also we have a vested interest in it working out because we're going to, we're going to still be here, hopefully, as your lawyers after it's over. So if it doesn't go great, we're going to have to deal with that, and we don't want that to happen. And if we do this right, you won't have to do it again for a long time. You all are uniquely poised among Texas school districts, I would say, in that you have had stable board superintendent relationship for a number of years, and you've had a track record of stable administrative leadership, too. You know, I have the opportunity to work with a number of school districts around the state, and I won't, I won't put in for every search. I don't want to have to, you know, at a certain point, it sails on that end, too. We're trying to get people to want to do this job. And this is a job that I can look people in the eye and say they should want to do it. And I don't think that will be a tough sell by any stretch, but not every job is like that these days in public education in Texas. So, so that makes this a particularly attractive search, and I think you're going to get a great result, no matter what you do. But I think that our partnership with you is something that you can really trust, and that's why we got into doing searches in the first place, is because we do have those trusting relationships with our clients. And that's what we, we hope to bring to this.
Okay. So let me talk a little bit about the, the process from my end as a consultant with Walsh Gallegos. I think I'll start by first simply saying, I am so much aware of how incredibly important this decision is for you. I mean, you, you have a community that looks to you to get it right, to find the leader for them and for you as a district that will take you from where you are now and move you forward. And it's, it's a scary time and it's, it's an exciting time, because then you have the, you know, the opportunity to step forward with intention and very specifically about who would be the one with the skill set and the match that best fits you. And because I'm so much, that is where I live, and, and I suspect you probably do as well, it's incredibly important, it's incredibly important that you find the best fit for you. And in doing that, there are several steps that I think are important in the process. And the biggest one is communication. And one of my primary roles is assisting you in doing that, in holding community forums and focus groups. And that's not just simply talking with members of the community who have wide and varied perspectives of the district. You know, the old saying of, you know, who has which side of an elephant? We all see our world through our own lens, and your community does the same. So communication through forums, but also with students, hold student forums, community forums with, with parents and community members, staff and employee forums, so that they all have an opportunity to give input if they choose to in a face-to-face way. And then a survey, an online survey for those that, you know, are like the rest of us, incredibly busy and give me something I can do from home, I can do in the afternoon and the evening, and I can get my input in that way. And then collate all that information in a way that's meaningful to you and helps you. Because you, you will build a profile of a, of a superintendent. You know, what are you looking for? What's important to you within the vision and the mission and the purpose of your district? And what are the skill sets and the qualifications that you have for that? But also, where do you want to be in the next three to five years? That's also a part of the profile of a superintendent, to recognize and find the way that that individual can help you achieve your goals, your purpose, or your school district and your community. So communication's huge. That is a very big piece of it, and quite frankly, a, I think, one of the most critical pieces, because it also guides you as you look at the applicants. College Station is an outstanding school district. I first became aware of you many years ago, and I don't think anyone in the room here today was there, but I was invited to come in and do a board workshop. And it was at the time when the board then was making decision about the first new high school. And I say you're first because who knows? There may be a third one of these eons down the road. The, so we talked about that because I'd just done that in Northwest. We'd built the first high school, so we came in and we did a workshop then. So I got to become a little bit familiar with the community at that time. The, the applications that you can expect will be wide and varied. You'll have people who understand the quality of the school system, the, the passion they have for leading with a group of board members who work with them and allow them to be able to fulfill your vision and your mission. Now, you have one employee, and there are a lot of employees in the school system, but you have one, and you set the directional system for your, for your district, and they, they go about making it happen. So, so that, that aspect of it will draw people to your district who will be very eager to have an opportunity to interview with you. So that leads to the screening process. I will tell you that in my experience, I have seen applicants from people who are, who are in classroom positions, who have just received their superintendent certification and are ready to roll. That probably won't be the fit for you, probably not. But they're all the way up to people with vast experience who have a very successful career, who will see College Station ISD as a destination career for them, and they will be very interested. So in the screening process, we, we go through a very thorough background of information on the individual. My job will be to look at each and every one of those applicants, match them against the qualifications for, that you have determined for your superintendent and the profile of your superintendent, and find the ones for you that rise to the top, that fit what you have identified, that you're interested in, in a superintendent. However, every single application that we have, you'll have access to and will be able to see. None will be pulled back. Now, what I will do is follow up, gosh, one most recent search I did, I probably did 20 online interviews with people who met the criteria and the qualifications. And then from those, was able to bring forward about 10 who were real, real strong contenders for the position. And from that, the board chose six or so that they wanted to interview. That doesn't mean the other, you know, 20 that applied aren't in a folder for you to look at if you choose to look at them. But it does give you a sense of the detail that goes into identifying who, who really does possess those skill sets. One of the things that, that I do that I think is important, and I want to share it with you, is tailor in that online, on that, I said online, I meant telephone, it's a conversation, interview that I do with them, is tailor two or three questions that are specific to the needs you have moving forward, that you've identified as a board, this is important to us and our community, this is important to, to see in our next superintendent. And I'll give you an example of three that I asked in the last district. One, how do you glean as superintendent? How do you glean the thoughts and desires of your community? What are the ways? And that's so open-ended. It's amazing what you can hear. Describe the work you've done to improve student results beyond the STAR test. In other words, what have you done beyond looking at a STAR test to improve student results? What else is out there? And then how do you create a high-performance leadership team? How do you mentor others, support them, grow people around you who can add value to the work that the district does? So that's just three. And that came out of, you know, a conversation with the board around the profile of a superintendent and what's important to you. Because at the end of the day, it's all about what you need. At the end of the day, it's about you moving your district forward and finding the person you trust to be a partner with you in making that happen. Now, past that, then their support in the interview process, strong bank of questions. I'm very partial in the second round of interviews, asking a scenario question that allows you to hear someone's thoughts, and it's not off of the top of their head necessarily either. I think that, that we need to know what people can think about when they've had time to review and reflect, but we also have, you know, questions that allow you to hear, what can they do when they're thrown a curve at a community meeting from someone? How do they react? And how do they react when they've had time to study and think about things and can come to you with a recommendation? So that's just sort of the process from beginning to end, culminating in you finding the best fit, the person that you believe can help you achieve your aspirations, your dreams and goals for the students in your community.
So with that, we're happy to answer any questions. I will just add, you know, to the extent that we're a law firm doing superintendent searches, you might wonder kind of, you know, why, why involve the lawyers? The lawyer, the legal aspects of it are going to be not the primary feature, we will help with contract negotiations, agenda postings, keeping you in compliance with statutory timelines associated with naming the lone finalist and things like that. But Karen and her role will do, be doing the bulk of the vetting of the candidates and things like that for, for reasons- things like that, for reasons of our professional legal ethics, keeping those roles separate is somewhat important. But fundamentally, I just want to close by touching on something Karen said, which is that the reason to hire us really is that we believe strongly that we've created a solid support system for this work. We can, we will provide you with a quality process, and we will work collaboratively with you to arrive at what that looks like. But we stand ready to sort of vouch for the quality of that process overall. And we've worked really hard to build our reputation as a law firm over the last 40 years, and we feel like that lends a lot of support to this work as well. So thank you so much for your time. We're happy to answer anything you might want to know.
Something we left out.
Just kind of, thanks for your list here. Couple of questions. One, do you have like a timeline? I mean typically, I mean, obviously, I think we kind of have something in mind, but can you tell me what a typical timeline would be?
Sure. A typical timeline, I will say what I think is probably most ideal is to have your new superintendent ready to go, or at least have their contract term ready to begin July 1. Most administrator contracts run July 1 to June 30. And at this stage of the spring, I think that's perfectly reasonable. So backing that out, we'd be looking at naming a lone finalist at some point in May and then approving the contract, you know, you have to do that three weeks later, so probably middle June, if you want to do it that way. That gives us May to do interviews, that gives us a little end of April to do interviews, with still a good three or four weeks to have the job posted and take applications. So working backwards this times really nicely, if that would be a good start time for the board. July 1 this year falls on a Saturday, and I know a lot of districts close that week of 4th of July. But, so start date would obviously be something we'd work with you on. And some districts like to have their lone finalist come out and do a little bit of consulting work in advance of their start date, so that's an option too. But functionally, I think that's about what it would look like.
Thank you. And then, looking at the fees here, so if I'm reading this right, the average is typically 12,000 to 16,000 on the legal side, and then an additional 10,000 for Dr. Rue and her expenses, correct?
That may be high on the legal side. Dr. Rue is a flat fee of 10,000. So the legal fees are really going to be up to you and how much you want legal involved. So meetings that you want us to come to, the contract negotiation is going to cost what it would cost anyway. So the best way to think about it is Dr. Rue's fee and then however much you want to use, you know, your lawyers along the way.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow up on the, sorry, the timeline? Because specifically, when you talk about trying to reduce it and hit that July 1st, you didn't mention some of that upfront, you know, gathering the input from our community and stuff. So how would that be able to fit in into a condensed timeline?
And I can add to that as well. That can be happening, once the job is posted, once that vacancy is posted, then the timeline, the time available starts then in working with the community and getting their feedback and their input. I like to have that done prior to the final closing of the posting, so that we've got all that input, we can come back with you as well, do follow-up with you on what that means prior to the final screening that you would then do for applicants.
Great. And just in along those lines, also, you said you kind of curate the, all the results of all that for it. Is that kind of a standard package you have that you present?
Okay. I'll do it. Okay. So, yes. Now, with anything, with any group, there almost falls a dichotomy. There are those, like, I'm a classroom teacher and I just got my, you know, my superintendent's certification and I'm going to apply, to the one with, you know, be on your radar, you know, if you could interview them. And so that's, it really kind of falls into three groups, the really strong, strong candidates, the close but maybe not a quite match, but you may still be interested in, and then those that were, you know, kind of also ran, so they were there, they filled out an application but they really didn't fit your criteria.
And so one of the things we'll do is work with you to try to determine how much you want to see and how much you don't want to see. And part of that is organizing information so that you can come to meetings and we'll make it easy for you to go through the files, you know, to the extent that you want to. And if you just want to kind of look at Karen's top 10 or whatever, we can do it that way. So we're very, we're very open to whatever y'all want to do. Our primary goal is to try to make it easy for you.
Exactly.
So on that note, both y'all, what do y'all anticipate? Interested applicant pool of people that would throw their hat in the ring, like you said, that spectrum? What do you think would be the qualified that we should actually, that y'all actually look through, and how many do you expect to bring to us for that discrete consideration?
So if I'm understanding you right, what would be the qualifications we might consider?
No, like, how many people? Just rough numbers?
Oh, a number of people, goodness. You know, that just, it's hard to say. I can't imagine you'd get less than 30 or 40 applicants. I can't imagine you'd get less than that. And I would think a considerable number of those would be, would be well-qualified. Again, that's in, that really is a caveat about what you consider your qualifications to be and what you, what the match is you may want. You may want someone who's had experience and it's determined, you want this in advance, you want it only to consider people who have been superintendents in a district with more than one high school. That may be a criteria, you know? So that would knock a lot of folks out who would, who are sitting in, you know, communities with one high school.
And then, so on that note, thank you for leading to my next question. What would you consider the risks or benefits about inside versus outside hiring? Because I imagine you've done a few of both.
Yeah, you know, here's what I believe about that. A strong candidate, whether, strong candidates, inside or outside, rise to the top. So the, if you have someone internally who you believe would be a strong candidate, they're going to rise to the top, they're going to be there. I think the value of conducting a search, a thorough search, is that it gives you the opportunity to vet the best out there that are wanting to work with you. And to see how you're, the person you are familiar with is represented in that group. It's a wonderful way to verify that's our person has been along, we are positive of it, we've got no doubt. From the other end of the spectrum, I wonder to either guess, no, a yes, or guess, we know, that's not going to be our candidate. But I think there's nothing that should, unless there's some unknowns or knowns, unknown to me, that would keep you from looking at an internal candidate. I think internal candidates deserve consideration.
And a thing I would add to follow up on that, if you're looking at the possibility of an internal candidate versus, you know, having a search, if there's any question or if there's just any question about whether you should do a search, I think a thing that I find as legal counsel is probably a thing your superintendent can speak to, is the absolutely most essential ingredient in the relationship is trust. And so if there are any question marks, you do everyone a favor by just taking the opportunity to relieve people of those question marks. It can be very hard. It's much better to go through and come, go through a process that you can all join in together and feel like you've arrived at the same place together, even if you're not starting at the same place together. It's, I think it's better for everybody.
Yeah. The last search I did, the internal candidate, did, did become the superintendent there.
So Dr. Rue, you would be our contact person. We'd be working with you throughout the entire process.
And to clarify, are you, you have one, two, three, four, five ongoing searches on this? Are these all that you are, they're not all your, so there's, okay.
No, 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 no. I would be dedicated to College Station. You know, I, there's, I can do a lot of things, but twirling plates while I dance on one foot are not, you know, that's not on my resume list. So, no, one at a time, thank you.
And I'm sorry if I missed this. Did you, how many have you done for superintendent's search?
Two.
Two, okay, thank you.
Yeah. My last one was Lewisville.
Ms. Padilla, sorry, last question. What are, what are district's needs and what are our values and vision?
Your district's needs, well, in my opinion, I mean, I think obviously we're going to defer to you as to what your needs are. And I don't see your values and vision on the wall anywhere. I can't read that. Yes. I know they exist.
Your success piece.
I know they exist and that, and I think that's a really important question, because that is, it is a useful way to undertake any project, is to remind ourselves what are our values and what are our goals and objectives. And so from that standpoint, that's something that we would incorporate into the work and incorporate that into the process as well, to the extent that it makes sense. We want this to be something that is representative of what you all want for your district. And what I think you need is another great superintendent.
That's right. See, I think, you know, you are, you've got a beautiful strategic plan. I looked at it online. And I would just tell you, you know, finding someone that can help you with your directional system, who can move forward for you, what you state in your vision and your mission, in your beliefs, in your profiles that you have of educators and graduates, just, you know, that's, that's the goal, is to help you find the person who can do that for you.
Anything else? We do appreciate y'all making the trip. Thank y'all so much for being here.
Thank you. Our pleasure.
And I will take the water and avoid the next person.
They're not making him use the same water.
I can clean up after myself. Thank you and all the best to you.
Anybody need to take a quick break? Everybody good? Just double-checking before we jump into item two. Okay. So that brings us to item two, consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the selection of a superintendent search firm. Y'all, at this point, we just want to open it up, obviously get any kind of feedback, comments, thoughts, as we kind of went through this last hour and a half. So I'll just kind of open it up right now.
I came in with kind of a rubric looking forward. Do they understand our district? What is their reach? And then their process? And so overall, and I had my score, and I still think that I liked the fact that they spoke to our values. Same thing with N2, whereas with TASB, it seemed like it was a conveyor belt. The reach, I think that's my only question with N2, because they're small, because they're new, but I like that. It's a more bespoke approach. They're the guy that knows the guy, but they know us. And so I think overall, for me, I'm really putting a lot of weight on, do they understand what we're dealing with? Because I'm skeptical. What, do they understand College Station? And that's why I like Walsh and Gallegos, we have a professional, they understand our history, so to speak. But with N2, I think they understand, as the healthy skepticism and I guess trepidation we all have with going outside and looking outside, there are inside guy on the outside, is the way I'm seeing it. And then on the disparity in costs, I actually think it's an indicator for me, with N2, we are getting two, so they seem on par. If my understanding was, Mr. Lancaster is 10,000, Mr. Colson is 10,000, it seems to be the going rate for consultants. I don't know if they'd give us any wiggle room on that. But also, especially in the view of TASB and Walsh, because they're a full-service legal firm, you know, where your money is, there to your heart shall be. If we're just 10,000 and they're doing 100,000 every year, we're small potatoes. And same in Walsh, Gallegos, I don't know, I mean, I trust professionalism, but again, I think the value per dollar.
Well, I think community's number one important, but not just knowledge of community, but their suggestion involving the community in the search. Think cost is a factor, timeline, experience, not just in superintendent searches, but also as a superintendent, the team and support staff that have to help them get us through this, tools for the search, tools that would be used to the community to relay information back to us, tools for the applicant to use to apply, and then tools for us to use as a board, and then after the higher support.
Yeah, I mean, I wonder, when we refer to N2 as kind of the local, they know us and so forth, and maybe they do, but how involved, it's been a long time since they've been actively involved with CSISD. And so, I don't know if, yes, they're local, yes, there's that benefit and that motivation potentially. But, I mean, on the flip side, the, I don't want to, I can't remember the exact words you used, Mr. Decker, but the machine that is TASB also has some benefits, in that this is, you know, they've, the team that Mr. Hall referred to and the system and that they do so many of these, that, again, that's kind of the flip side of, they're both, I think, valuable views. So, I don't know.
I think that's a good kind of list of evaluate. I like your list, you know, how well they know us, the reach, the process, you added a few things, time with the cost certainly, as well. I think, to me, that N2 seemed to be, yes, I like that they, I actually like that they know us. I do think that they will, will work hard for College Station, for this to be successful, not only because they're here, but also because they were getting into this as part of their business, right? But I don't see quite as much that they, and they had a timeline, but I'm a little more worried about the process and maybe the tools, which I always said, the tools, right? Like, to charge us extra for a survey, I think it's because they may not have a lot of experience doing a survey and putting that together for us. It does seem kind of a pricey add-on to what was already kind of pricey. So maybe that's something that could be, could be discussed on that side of it. TASB, I'm torn between, I do like that they do a lot of these, a lot of them seem very small, though. But then, on the other hand, they turn around and they've done, they've done Brian, so they do know this community to some degree as well. So, I guess I'm...
I think the only, the only thing for me was very telling about my question about what are the risk and benefit of internal versus external. They seem to be trying to make the push for why we should do external. And then I think, to me, what's very obvious to anybody that's had a new boss, that transition period. Now, I know they spoke to it earlier in, but the fact that that wasn't at the top of mind, that's not where their focus was, and realizing that this is a big shift culturally that we've never hired outside, and just knowing that, I mean, like we talked about with TRE, the state of, the state of teaching, the competitions are out there. So that's why I think with, on that answer, Walsh and N2, because that's what worries me, is it's just kind of a, the small town, the small stuff, we're still region six to them. And then if you add in tools, at least for me, if I'm doing live tracking, now it's even, which is why I like prime numbers when we do evaluations. Because I figured, yeah, TASB has the best tools. And then Walsh, Gallegos, since you're into the net, everybody has the same score now.
I think you tend to do a better job when you care. And it's not that I think any of these don't care and they want to do well, and they have a track record that relies on that. But the personal connection for N2, I think, adds value. I think there's some benefit, if you look at TASB and Walsh and Gallegos, and kind of the larger outside, so there's some benefits there, which I think, kind of, what you were getting at, Mr. Ben, but I want, I want this group to care and take it personally. And that's a noticeable difference here. Obviously, I think TASB did some homework, I think less so in the last group, other than some prior experience, which is not a bad thing. But I want them to care and take it personally, and because I will. So from that standpoint, I think N2 is a, is a real benefit.
So is there, in terms of their reach, I mean, how important? So is there, in terms of their reach, I mean, how, how important, I'm, I'm asking myself how important that is? Like, so do we just rely on the reputation of our district, you know, or the good reputation of our district to, for people to see that posting? I mean, I guess I'm, how does this actually work?
So just kind of looking at it, just kind of looking, maybe to help answer your question. We're about one week into this whole process. If you want to throw it a process, we're one week.
Right, right, we are.
Chatter has already started.
Okay.
I mean, the conversations are being had. N2 told us about it. Mr. Martindale and I have had some conversations. So the talk has already started. That's the good news, I think. So the, maybe the concern of the connection and, and the reach, I mean.
Is it a big concern?
Yes and no. I've seen both of these guys at different school district events when we go to conferences and stuff like that. But I've seen some of the Tasby people as well. So they're well-connected, not, not concerned about that. But I think our districts, it, it represents itself. And yes, again, y'all, I don't know if I'm being arrogant, but I think the district has proven itself that we are going to be an attractive opportunity to anybody. And so I don't know how much weight I can put on the fact of our, is our search firm going to attract and find those people?
Right.
Or is the district going to naturally by, just evolve into attracting it? I don't know that.
Right. And that's what, that's, you know, that's what I'm getting at, kind of. And that's also, and the other question on that is, do we want someone to be sought after? Or do we want them to already know about us and to, you know, be coming after us, you know? And then another thing that, that I'm thinking about too is the process. Like, you know, some, like Tasby clearly has done this for a long time and they have a process that they follow. It does sound like they will deviate from that process, you know, based on what we want. But they have a pretty tried and true process, right? The other two, I'm not convinced that they have a set process. Is that good or is that bad? I mean, what are, what are y'all's thoughts on that? Cause like N2 doesn't seem, I mean, they're, they're, they're still feeling this out.
Yeah, they seem very open-ended. In fact, we'll, we'll do what y'all want to do. We almost, especially because we're doing this quick, we need some pretty good guidance.
Well, but they are just descriptive.
Right, both of them.
Yeah, they spelled it out the most. You're right.
They very well mirror Tasby's. I mean, cause those are the only two I've got right here, and nothing against Walsh and Gallegos, but those are the ones I got right here in front of my face here. They mirror each other very similar as far as presentation planning. You know, here's an online survey and I'm not saying we're going to do an online survey or we're not, you know, or we're going to do a public forum on a Sunday night. You know, because everybody we think can make that one. I, you know, I don't know what that looks like. But I think they mirror each other. The thing, I will be honest, the thing that made me nervous, and I'm not trying to rush this by any means, and I don't think any of us are. The thing that made me nervous is Tasby seemed a little bit nervous about 90 days.
I think that's why we all kept asking questions about it.
They said we're doing, and I wrote down, they're doing a small district right now to push 90 days. And I'm not saying that makes me nervous or not, and I'm not saying we're trying to rush through this because it is very possible we get into this and go, you know what, this is going to take a little longer than we thought. And that's okay. It's okay. I like Thomas's question about, you know, teachers and, you know, where, where would teachers like to see this and all that? I'm a spouse of a teacher. I understand that. The goal, yeah, would be to make sure that we get them in. How do our administrators feel? I mean, they do retreats and things during the summer, you know? Whoever the superintendent is, is going to miss that retreat that's done in June. I mean, that's a big, that's a big deal right now. And, and, you know, maybe Mr. Manz, we're going to have to lean on you to help with that transition piece. Because if they do come in July 1st, so processes and procedures look similar unless I'm missing something.
I think N2, I mean, if we're comparing, Tasby has it going on about timeline, because they've done it so many times. But comparing and contrasting N2 versus Walsh to me was, N2 said, we can do it a little less than 90 days, but you're already, we're already tight. Whereas I heard from Walsh, maybe I'm wrong, oh, we can get it done by May. I mean, we'll have you someone by June. I, I felt like they were a little, they didn't have, they didn't provide us the timeline layout and they seemed a little more, we can make the timeline work for you as you wish.
Is, is that a good thing or a bad thing, though?
That's my next question.
Well, I mean, I prefer, I mean, given the expenditure and the importance to the district, I think it should be a little, little more firm.
So may I pose?
Yeah, go right.
Question, and I have the least of any of this, so it's simply my opinion. I, I guess this, here's the question I posed to you. Is whether you make a decision on a search firm today, you, you're probably likely going to make a decision within the next week and a half. If you don't today, then you'll need to come back together and probably make that decision sooner than later. Here, here is just me thinking out loud. Once you select a firm, whomever, all three are going to post it in the same locations. It's going to be posted on Texas ISD for all three of them and likely on tasnet.org. The, the, the posting location will be the same for every one of them. It'll say College Station ISD, click, here's the search firm, click this link. It, it will be the, the same for all of them, regardless of whom you select. Once you make a decision about a particular search firm, they will assist the board or whomever and, and probably our human resource. However, we can, and those are logistics. The position can be posted fairly quickly. It can be posted, just say it's posted an entire month of April. That's a month. And at the same time, the consultant is going through the process of collecting community feedback. I think you heard all of them or a couple of them say that you will run those things at the same time, right? Because the feedback is going to drive your decision-making, not necessarily the application process, right? You have it posted for the month of April. It closes the end of April. That's a month. I can assure you, anyone that has any interest whatsoever is already waiting to see who you pick. This is not a secret. It's just not. Because when the, when I announced my retirement, the media picks it up, then it gets posted in TACAD Daily, on Texas ISD. Superintendents and school officials are aware of my intentions, okay? So people are aware. It can be posted for three to four weeks. It's a long time. It, it may not seem like it, but it is because you legally, you're not, you, 10 days is all that's actually required. Be going, the consultant be going through that feedback mechanism through the month of April. Then you're looking at handling business with the consultant, whether it's screening candidates and doing a couple rounds of interviews throughout the entirety of the month of May, if, if you want to take a whole month to do it. And your position to name a lone finalist, the first part of June. I, I don't, I, I think it's doable and I don't, I don't think that's rushed. I, I don't. You may, and obviously, I mean, I'm just telling you my opinion because this is your decision to make, not mine. I'm not recommending one way or the other. Now, true, principals and people want to know who this person is. I would tell you more times than not, as a teacher, I was always more curious with whom my principal was than the superintendent. Cause that was my direct, my, my person I was with on a regular basis. But obviously campus administrators and central office administrators do want to know who's, who's sitting in this particular position. As you alluded to, yes, this person is going to miss the summer administrative leadership. They're just going to. It's the first of June. However, I remind you that we have a strategic plan that has driven the district systematically for the last couple of years. We have a very strong executive team that understands, as you heard from a number of them at the last board meeting, what the strategic plan is. The mechanisms are in place and I'm, I'm telling you, and, and so I, I felt the need, I guess, to just run my mouth, Mr. Horak. I don't know. I think the timing is, is, I, I don't, if I felt like the timing was, I would never intentionally put the district in a compromise over timing. I think this timing is, it, it has to be efficient. There's not a lot of time to mess around with it. But you also don't want this same dragon out forever either, because it can, you just don't.
That was my first thought when they brought it up, was if, if July, August is a bad time, I trust Ms. Martindale would have waited till December. Cause I didn't know that you could transition superintendent January. And, and I think we should remember that at the end of the day, it's our choice. Really, the consult's inconsequential. So I think like Darren said, that person, and that, that was the answer that, that Mr. Lancaster gave. We're, we're relying on them, not their process, not their tools on them. And so, and I, to Mr. Martindale's point, I don't know if it's up for discussion. I, I am comfortable making the decision today. I, I think in the interest of, of the timeline, unless it's procedure that we're required to wait. But I think either way, we should get moving on the process.
Agreed, because this falls to us. Even the community outreach falls to us. I mean, I, stock show Saturday, I'm getting stopped from friends and questions all the time, which is good, because that means they care, right? So again, if, if you break it down just by cost, I believe, and that's why I asked the question, it sounds like Walsh and Gallegos would probably be the most, although they seem to back off on the consultant fees, but that's what they put in there is based on their searches was 12 to 16K for them. That's what they said, and then the other 10,000. What's that? Plus expenses, right. So, and what I heard too, had I been too, was this is an active process, not a passive one. So it's going to be posted, there's going to be interest, and it falls to them to help us get out and do that. So what I hear from Mr. Martindale, which I have every reason to believe, is we're going to have a lot of viable candidates. So to me, I'm, I'm with you. I think we get moving. To me, the benefit falls to N2 out of the three that I heard today.
Are we still going to the executive session or?
We have to decide, but it's in regard to personnel matters. All three mentioned, and I think we all kind of asked the question, all three mentioned, and Martindale did just now, and I wrote it down here right next to C1, that this is an optimal time to be in a search firm or a search for a superintendent. That's the good news. Timeline is what it is. We make it what we want it. Tasby made one comment about, you know, May can get very difficult and it's tough. And there's one board member that wanted to, whatever board wanted to be at everything, but his work hours and all that. Well, y'all, I'm just going to remind us, everybody, we signed up for this. We volunteered for this. And as much as the community is taking it serious, I think we're taking it just as serious, if not more. And so we've got to remember that, that it could be hot and heavy for next April and May for us, just considering everything we have going on. But that's just, that's the nature of where we're at right now. So just keep that in, in mind as we move through this, because it doesn't need to be a stressful time. And May can be one of those times when we're really looking at the candidates that could be here. And we can make it what we want of it, but we don't have to rush this as well. I'll put my two cents in. All candidate, all, all, all three visits. I found to be very similar. Considering rates of what each one charges, taking that into consideration, but also looking at what I hope the district and what I hope as a board we're looking for in our next superintendent. I feel N2 can provide the overall all-around opportunity where I don't have to sit on a Zoom call with someone or a phone call. I can go tell these people, hey, I need, I need face-to-face, I need to look you in the eyes and make sure that whoever we're talking about right now, that y'all feel comfortable on. And that's big to me. We lived through the Zoom life in COVID. And I'm not saying that it's, it's a detriment and all that. I'm just kind of looking at, from the perspective that I want to be able to look people in the eye and know who I'm dealing with and that the information I'm getting back. I can sit and talk to our community members and our teachers and our administrative staff and go, this is the person. This is the person we, that, that, this is where we're at. So that, that's where I'm leaning. If y'all want to make the decision today, we can. We do have a caveat with the April 11th management oversight meeting if we have to. And we can put it there too. So I just, I want to give y'all that as well, kind of timeline.
If we're going to move, I think we need to decide today.
Yeah, and I, I think we should move too, because I agree that, I mean, you said it's an optimal time, but it's an optimal time because there's a lot of open, they're open right now. People, people are submitting their applications right now. We need to get ours openness out there as, as quickly as possible. I really, I really think so. I, I like N2 also. I love that they're here, right? And, and I think they will work well with us and our community. I do personally think we want, we should need to get that, you know, the survey input, however, we want to gather that from our community and from our, our staff and students as well. I really don't like that they're charging more for that. That's so maybe, like I said earlier, maybe that's something you could talk with them about.
That was my thought. I don't know if it's worth the five, haggling over the, the 5,000, but my mind, if, say, Mr. Coulson was the lead consultant, just like Ms. Rue. So there's 10,000. And then just like we would have done with the legal fees, that Mr. Lancaster, I understand their partnership is, is adjunct consultants for the five. I don't, I don't know if this is a negotiated process. That would be mine.
I, I mean, I think, yes, every dollar is important, but we're talking about a, a person who will hopefully lead us for the next several years in a, you know, several hundred or, well, over a hundred million dollar budget every year. And so getting the right person is probably more important in the big scheme of things than a $10,000 price difference. And here, but here's the other question. I hate being the guy to ask this, but, you know, everybody keeps talking, and maybe I'm just not in the know. But everybody keeps talking about how N2 is more plugged in to CSISD and so forth. I know we have that statement, but how do, how do we know that? I mean, what, I mean, Mr. Coulson's been almost 10 years, it's been almost 15 years since Mr. Lancaster was, you know, working for the district. And so, yes, they live here, but outside of that, are they still?
Well, I don't, I don't know that we're putting all our eggs in one basket on the fact that they're, they're plugged in with CSISD. I, I think it's more of just the opportunity and the, the potential relationship of being in the community, knowing the school district, supporting the school district. But at the same time, the, knowing our vision of what we're hoping for and.
I mean, do they, do they know our vision any more than any of the other two companies?
Very true. I mean, but just like the Tasby rep read on our website about 50 men who can cook.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody can do that.
I'm with you, Mr. Ben, in the sense that there can be some benefits from, from some outsiders. I, I completely get that. What I do know is that the others don't live here, so that I know that they don't know us as, as well as somebody who probably lives here and worked in the district. I, I get that there's years gone by, but again, I would just, if you're looking, trying to look at it objectively, right, you're looking at the others, they're, they're not here. So how much of a benefit is it? Don't know, but, but I would say it's a problem.
I see what you're saying. It's a double-edged sword, because we don't, you know, we don't want to go just locally, because they're local. But for me, having to go through a transition every two years, the past 15 years, the internal staff I'm worried about, and they have rapport, and they probably hired some people. And so I think that actually goes a long way. We have two audiences, right? We have, we have the, well, actually probably, you know, three, we have the taxpayers, we have the parents of students, and then we've got the, the people that, that work for the CSISD. So that, that was my thought, just to be blunt about it.
Has, hasn't N2 been doing some professional development and whatnot for us as well?
They lead the Principals Institute and Assistant Principals Institute. We typically send two to three Jeff each year annually to that.
Okay.
Prior to us entering in with Engage to Learn to do our strategic plan, they led our success team professionally developed with our campus administration into, that's been a couple of years ago though. Yeah. So that, that is their, their largest part of their wheelhouse.
Right, right. So they, so from that aspect, they do know our district. And I'm also like, you know, Darren, you were saying, you know, about relationships and whatnot. I wonder if that will help when they're conducting surveys, interviews, focus groups, whatever. If that, those relationships that they already have with our administration across the district, if that will help get really true answers, right? I mean, I wonder if that will help or if that would actually be detrimental. I, I lean on the side of, I think it would help that they already have relationships with people in town, so they. people in town, so they'd get what people really want.
And then one other thought about, you kind of talked about it, about reach. And I agree, I don't think the reach is necessarily for people to go out and get the applicants to come to us. I think it's the, that first level of screening. It's out, I mean, they talked about that a lot. It's really, what are your connections out there? Are there, not ours, their connections with people, potential candidates out there, so they can help have those first conversations and help figure out who is that best fit for our district. And do I know which one would be the best at that for sure? No, but I mean, I do think that, that both of the, both of the N2 folks do not only, again, kind of know what, what our side of it, but I, I also think they are somebody who could sell College Station, right? They, they know and like College Station as well. They know the attributes of our district and the, and the city, as opposed to somebody who had to go look up some data on us before they, they showed up, maybe.
I think it's safe to say that we have, we have nixed Tasby.
Tasby, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying the, again, we need to sell the district, but just to, to have that conversation about what the pros and cons are of finding the right fit, right?
Like what Tasby, the apples to apples that Tasby gave us was 15, 1600 person school districts and then Arlington. You know, they're, they're giving Drippin', Springs, Leander, Midway, you know, people that were at least in that zone. And that's one of the things with Tasby, whereas I'm doing with Region 6, which is a huge...
I make the motion that we approve to hire N2 Learning as the search.
Second.
I'd just like to say this, and then I'll, I'll just get off my chest. So when Mr. Martindale announced his retirement, the, the board, and maybe it's just what I heard as opposed to what was actually said, was we need to use this opportunity to go outside of always hiring from within, use this opportunity to, and again, I'm paraphrasing, but maybe get out of our comfort zone. And it seems like we're falling back into the comfort zone of, these two guys were part of the district for many years, they did a lot of great things, but it's, it's that, it's that comfort, it's that knowing them, and it's that, again, there's nothing wrong with that.
Right.
I'm extremely uncomfortable.
I think we ought to go completely outside of what we're, what we're comfortable with. And we've got to be comfortable with who we hire, but as far as, you know, who's doing that, who's leading us in that process, getting that, some different perspective, I think there's a lot of value to.
Which one do you like?
Tasby.
Agree with Josh. Based on, based on.
They, they've done hundreds of these, or hundreds, but dozens or hundreds or whatever. I mean, they, they have the system down, and districts keep coming to them over and over. And again, it's just that outside perspective.
And I can agree. But are districts coming to them because of their price tag? Or are they coming to them for their reputation? And we don't know that answer. That's the unfortunate part. I only have to assume at this point.
And what I would have to look at, we don't have the data for, because the other two firms haven't done enough, haven't done enough superintendent hires. Because what I would want to look at for what you're speaking to is how long do the superintendents stay?
Right.
But...
And why do they have the guarantee of if the superintendent does not stay, we do the next one for you?
Right. But we don't, we don't, we can't have that data.
I don't have the answer, but I think he said it himself, because they're here to support public school.
Sure. Do, do you think the other two are not?
No, not necessarily.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. But we also, I'll go back to, you said, why, I mean, they had more staff members here, they have more. I'm just, the way I'm looking at it is they have, it's going to take a lot to get it done, whatever timeframe we choose. Sorry, that, they have a staff, they have tools in place, and there was, I mean, this, this caught me was they did, they were the only group of the two to say after the hire support, like, we help you with that transition too. Not saying the other ones won't, they just didn't, the other two groups didn't bring it up.
And the feedback for the internal candidates, I thought was a positive too.
Well, we do have a motion by Dr. Payne and a second by Mr. Decker. Is there any further discussion?
I mean, is there, I mean, I would love for us to be online with this. And in some regards, we said it's, I mean, it's not the hugest decision, because, you know, we are going to make the, we are going to make the decision on the candidates, we just need somebody to help guide us through this. So it's not the be all, end all, but I would love for us to be aligned. Does it make any sense to table? How quick, how quickly could we get back together and have some time to talk about it if we tabled it?
So again, not my place, but it's never stopped me before, right? I think whomever you select of the two you're discussing, they will do a wonderful job for you. I believe that you're not going to go wrong with either decision. I understand the points both ways. What I do believe is, as Kimberly was beginning to allude to, is this needs to be, in my opinion, a unified decision right here with this, because this is the beginning of the process. There is a motion and a second that has to be tended to. If, if, if you, as a, you just, I think it's important that there's a unified message in whatever this decision is, and if it's not there, then can you table? I might have to look at my, my rules expert. I think you have to take action since there has been a motion and a second.
I thought if there's abstentions, then we don't have a quorum for votes, affirmative votes. So if there's two yeas and four, and five abstentions...
No one has voted.
So anyway, that would be up to y'all's calendar, Ms. McAdams, as to how quickly you come together, if that's a choice.
I think we need to get it done today. We need to get it done today.
I agree. We're all here.
We're all here.
Nothing's going to change.
Even if we, if you decide to table it, it would be at least three days before we can meet again.
And the presentations don't change.
Again, we're making a multi-year, huge decision. And following up what, what Mr. Horak said, you know, do we know if the people that have used Tasby have been satisfied with them? Well, that gives us a couple of days to make a few phone calls and...
Can we, well, we already have a motion and a second.
I mean, you can always amend.
Right, well, will the amend, could we, can the amendment be to?
I don't know.
Table it for a little while? I can't remember all the Robert's rules.
Even though we have a motion and a second, we can table?
I understand wanting to have a decision made today. I'll take the blame for not being able to make decisions really quickly.
Here's my concern with waiting.
Okay.
Not just the second guessing, which tends to happen, but...
Can you lean up a little bit closer? I can't hear you very well.
Not just the, the, the natural second guessing that everybody's going to do, and the thing ourselves, either, we're either going to dig ourselves in, and we're going to be unsayable three days from now, or we're going to talk ourselves out of it, which creates buyer remorse on the back ends. And then also, this is our decision. This is not our church decision, this is not all the emails we're going to get after this decision. So I think for the position of cloture, that we need to vote today. I would appreciate a recess, though.
I guess my, my comment here would be to, yes, it's, it's, we have the biggest decision of the district at hand. Well, that's what I was getting at. That's the biggest decision we have. This is the second. And while I understand, Mr. Martindale, we need to be unified on that, who we go with on, on a search firm and all that, we dang sure better be unified on who we put in that seat whenever we could bring it to a vote, because that's the one that really matters. So we can recess for a bit and come back, or we can table, so...
Well, I've been drinking a lot of water, so for five minutes.
You were just talking about it.
All right, so we come back with, just a reminder here, we have a motion by Mr., Dr. Payne, seconded by Mr. Decker. We've had some discussion. We do have an opportunity to table, if that is where we want to go, but that would have to be motioned as well, so...
I guess, just want to, let me say this, and then we can, so my, basically, I think any of them might, would do a good job, but my top choice would be Tasby based upon their experience. N2 is a close second, and then Washington, Gallegos, it'd be my third choice.
That's why I was asking about process earlier. That's why I started the whole thing with process, because I feel like, I wanted to know how important we all thought that was. And I should have thrown in their experience, I, because in my mind, that's what I was thinking too, a tried and true process, right? So can, well, so do we vote to table that?
You have to have a motion to table.
Or you can bring this up. Because even if it failed, we can table, or even if this were to fail, we could always bring it up again.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I really, and I'm torn from the moment, or, I mean, I see pros and cons of all the sides, but Mr. Ben's comment that if we truly, I mean, this is all our individual thoughts, if we, if we truly want to get an outside view of our district in this search is into the right place to go. I mean, we argued, they haven't been here in a while, but on the other hand, they still are here and have been very involved with our district. I will say from the, from experience, I mean, they're doing this a couple of times and going internal, which I think we're far and above the, the right things to do, the right thing to do for, for both of those hires, very much so. I think going, we'll get into some other discussions, I think going external is going to be an import, an important piece of what we do here. And so maybe getting, getting the different viewpoints of people farther away from our district may be helpful to us. So I can, I recognize that point that you were making, very much so.
I appreciate where you're coming from, but why I disagree, at least for me, is if you jump in the deep end, you wear a life vest your first time. So yeah, I think we're searching outside. Oh, I get where y'all are coming from, but if it's our first time jumping in the deep end, I want a life vest. That's what I'm looking at, is I don't mind, I like that we're going outside, I get, I get the reasoning for that, but I want something closer, so I'm not, some, first, our outside hiring in over a decade, and we're going with somebody that we, that we don't have a personal rapport with. That's just me, I get where y'all are coming from. And then, well, I think, I think I'm a little torn and confused, because I'm hearing, well, they got experience and they got a process and this and that, so do we care more about the experience and the process, or do we care more about the type of candidates that are going to be brought to us through that type of firm? Because I think all of them have the same, well, at least in my opinion, N2 and Tasby have the same reach. One just has two people and one has four, five, or six, seven, whatever it is. But they all run in the same circles. I mean, I run in the same circles as, as folks, I'm sure we all run in our same circles of folks, so that's where I'm trying to understand. Are we, are we looking for a process and experience, or are we looking for a reach, which I think any of the firms, and even, even Washington, Gallegos, just because of how many offices and representatives and working in school districts they have, I think they all have the reach.
I'm going to step away from it, I have a kid calling.
Yeah, but, and to your point, but the superintendent, or the candidate that we're looking for is going to look and just see who we go with, and they're going to apply. That, that pool, it's, it's a fixed pool. And then I, I, I think the only tools, I agree, both to Thomas's point and Kim's point, but I, I think at this point, we need to make, I, I'll still dig it on, it needs to be voted on today. And I think, like I said, otherwise we're just going to keep getting entrenched. And so I, can I second my second?
No. So thought, as I'm going, so, you know, Walsh, this is an unrelated thought, but, so Walsh said that you don't have to, your legal firm will depend on how much you need us. So if we were to go to N2, we still are able to lean on Tasby for help, because Tasby said they would come back and do the onboarding training if that's what we wanted. So given that scenario, that we still have support from Tasby, no matter what we choose, I'm fine with N2.
Okay, good point. Very good point, that the transition piece can be separate from the search firm. So very good point.
I'm still just thinking through things, you guys. So the interview process, that portion of it. I know that, that, well, I mean, it looks like, whichever firm we hire would do the, could, so are they going to, they're going to cull through everything, all of the applications, and then give us however many we specify, and then we will go through those, and then we conduct the interviews with their help?
As much as we want their help and as much as we don't.
After we choose a firm, we get to tell them, then we'll come back together and decide what that looks like.
Right.
Okay. So I'm not going to assume that I know all the right questions to ask. Having, how much help do we want in those questions? And who, who is going to have the best type of questions? Do you get what I'm, where my thought process is going?
And that's why, that's why I was asking how many people they've interviewed personally.
Right.
Since 2006. And why I say 2006 is when you look at the generational turnover, the, the middle managers that were being hired since 2006 are now those people that are demographically candidates for superintendent. So people that haven't hired since 2001 haven't seen that career progression, and, and the generational perspective that comes with that. And that's, if, if I want to be bluntly honest, so Tasby, when I say the conveyor belt, they haven't hired anybody in this, in this decade. And then with Ms. Rue, with all her qualifications, has been in academia, which is a whole other discussion, whereas they've actually hired relatively recently. And I think to your point about the reputation with N2, they're small, they're hungry, I like that, for the same reason I don't trust wedding planners and funeral directors, because they don't rely on return business. And apologies to the funeral directors out there, but they, these guys are up and coming, they need that. They, I want to be the district they point to and say, look what we did for them, and look at how well that process went. And I think that's a lot hungrier than Tasby, where we're just, they just leave us off, because you know they've done more than those six they showed us. Just don't show your losers.
Darren, and Tasby does have a bank of questions. My, my assumption is they provide the board with that, those questions.
As a member of Tasby.
Allow you to, to, to work from there.
I guess is that any of them...
I'm not sure about N2. I'm, I'm sure they can or would assist to craft questions. I know Tasby for a fact has a bank of questions. I'm not sure about N2. But a part of the process is they would support y'all through, through that.
Okay. And I did also like, I mean, we've, we've been on the receiving end, if that's the right way to put it, but, but I, we had a, school board members come and interview us. I was part of that when Dr. Ely went two shirts solo. I was interviewed about Dr. Ely by their board members, and that was, you know, by, by Tasby and...
Which it seems like we all get to, all of them offered a district-type visit.
Okay.
So I would assume that would be...
Right, right.
In that as well. You know, I mean, I go back to gut feeling too. I mean, I'm just going to tell you like it is. I listen to everybody, everybody's feedback's been great, but I go back to my gut feeling that I just feel I, as a board member, I'd have more comfort in dealing with the guys from N2. It goes back to, I do business on looking people in the face, and I feel I can read a whole lot on what person's telling me by that, and hold a lot of weight in that. So that's where my comfort level is, my gut reaction, and, and why I lean more towards them over Tasby or Washington, Gallegos.
And I'm, I'm good with that too, because I have the same gut feel. I think we have a good relationship working with them as we move this through at a, at a good, at a good clip, because they are going to be here, they're going to be available. Again, there's pros and cons to every, for, for all, all three that we're looking at, but I think I would be very pleased working, working, working with them. I, I do think they lack some of the tools, but hopefully they'll be getting those together for us right now.
Unless I didn't reveal all... Unless they didn't reveal all the tools.
Maybe, yeah.
Aren't they doing Arlington?
They haven't done it very much, I mean, it's just...
They're the ones doing Arlington, right?
No.
I think they'll do just good.
Done, they've done one superintendent survey, one, that's...
All right, in recap, motion by Dr. Payne, second by Mr. Decker for N2 Learning as the search firm. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0, brings us to executive session. Y'all see any point in going to executive session? I think we're good.
I do not.
Okay, that brings item adjournment. Hey, really, thank y'all for being here. Appreciate y'all taking your time, this was important, and we got through it, so I appreciate that.